Give me the invocation for us, please. Would you mind stepping forward and giving the invocation for us, please? Normally I just pick random folks. He just happened to be sitting there, so.
I wouldn't be sure about that. Let's pray. I have a desire we come tonight with this council meeting. Be with all of us and all the speakers tonight, oh Lord. Give the council what they need. Give the mayor what he needs, oh Lord. We give you the honor and the praise. Amen.
Thank you, Kent, for coming in. Let the record reflect, ladies and gentlemen, call this meeting order, welcome to the Monroe City Council for the date of September 9th, 2025. Thank you. Let the record reflect, please, that all members of council are present. I do have Mr. Thompson on the phone. Greg, are you there?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us. I need an approval of the agenda, please, and this is a motion for the regular approval of the agenda. A motion by Ms. Crawford and a second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. The consent agenda this month is the planning commission minutes from June, DDA minutes, CVB minutes from July, city council retreat minutes from July 13th, Historic Preservation Commission minutes of July 2025. Called council minutes, called council minutes, and called council minutes from August 5th, 12th, and 12th. Council minutes from the 12th and executive session minutes from the 12th as well. Approval of the consent agenda, please. I need a motion.
Leave to approve.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm is their second. I'm gonna give that one to Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you. We have a few proclamations tonight. See if I have these in the right order. First proclamation honoring Catherine Marion Bennett Wilson on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Whereas it's a privilege to recognize and honor the remarkable milestone of longevity in the extraordinary life of Marion Wilson, who is celebrating her 100th birthday on September 17th, 2025. And whereas Mrs. Wilson was born at home in Forsyth County, Georgia in the year 1925, and has witnessed a century of history, innovation, and progress, and has contributed to the fabric of her family, community, and nation with strength, wisdom, and grace. And whereas throughout her life, she has been a source of inspiration to many, living a life marked by hard work, service, gardening, kindness, faith, and making a lasting impact on those who have had the joy of knowing her. And whereas Mrs. Wilson was married to the late William Clyde Wilson, Sr., and has been blessed with three children, six grandchildren, nine great-grandchildren, and one great-great-grandchild, leaving a legacy of love, perseverance, and family. And whereas we join the family, friends, and the entire community in expressing our admiration, gratitude, and heartfelt congratulations to Marion on this joyful celebration. Now therefore, I, John S. Howard, Mayor of the City of Monroe, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2025, as Marion Wilson 100th Birthday Celebration, and urge all citizens to join in celebrating the life and legacy of this extraordinary centenarian. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Monroe to be affixed this ninth day of September, 2025. John Stewart Howard. I'll be taking this to Great Oaks. It will be a little bit more of a party when I get there. I think at 100 years old, Ms. Wilson declined to come tonight. But it's impressive nonetheless, and there are a lot of fine folks at Great Oaks. And we just did one of these last week, so turning 100, it's getting to be more common. Next. It's Constitution Week. I have some people here. Daughters of the American Revolution? Thank you for coming. This proclamation of Constitution Week in the City of Monroe, Georgia, whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 250th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law in 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John S. Howard, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Monroe, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through the guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Monroe to be affixed this ninth day of September, 2025. John S. Howard. Interesting tidbit about the Constitution. It is the oldest and shortest Constitution in existence right now. There's my one fun fact. Would anybody, ladies, would you like to come up and? That would be great. I'm sure somebody would volunteer. Next, are the Echols here? Mike, Sally? Come on up. So ladies and gentlemen, my first meeting on the Planning Commission, I'm guessing was 15 years ago, and the day I walked in, Mike Echols was up here with Johnny Sorrels and Dick Hester, Rosalyn. And I think there might have been one more.
Mickey Langford.
Mickey Langford. And I think you should remind him that I forgot him during this meeting, so he can gripe at me at Potluck next time I see him. But Mike has been serving our community for decades, partially by being married to one of the most wonderful people I've ever known, Sally Echols, who is my seventh grade science teacher. So for any scientific formulas that I've forgotten, we're all gonna blame it on her. Will you step forward, please? This plaque is in recognition of Mike Echols. The Mayor and City Council thanks you for 25 years of faithful service and dedication to the City of Monroe by serving on the Monroe Planning Commission from 2000 to 2025. Hang on one second. You got it, Lee? Retirement. Do you have anything for K-9?
Yeah, Major McClung will be.
Major McClung? This is our public presentation for the retirement of K-9 Zero that will, as we will do this now, and then we'll, I think, discuss later in the evening that Zero will be going home with Ryan G.
Yeah, we'll have that formality at the end.
All right. Floor's yours. That works, fine.
All right. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, for those I haven't met yet, my name is Matt McClung, and I serve as the Operations Commander for the Monroe Police Department. Tonight, we gather to honor the service and retirement of K-9 Zero, a Belgian Malwah, who has faithfully served the Monroe Police Department since completing his initial training with Sergeant Ryan G. on June 14th, 2018, excuse me. For more than six years, Zero has been a cornerstone for our K-9 program and a trusted partner to Sergeant G. His impact on this department and our community cannot be overstated. Zero has deployed on hundreds of traffic stops, serving both as a deterrent and a protector. He is directly credited with over 42 felony drug arrests and the seizure of at least 32 illegal firearms. His work has led to the seizure of approximately $40,000 in illegal funds, removing dangerous resources from criminal organizations. He partnered in 27 search warrants and conducted 19 tracks with 10 successful apprehensions, including three bite apprehensions and four non-bite felony apprehensions. His service extended from beyond Monroe, assisting agencies such as DEA, US Marshals, ATF, and Georgia State Patrol, and more than a dozen other sheriff's departments and police departments around the state of Georgia. Zero has contributed to school safety, conducting 10 school searches, as well as two jail searches and three assists at the Atlanta Airport. Beyond enforcement, he carried out muzzle tracks for two suicidal individuals and one missing child, where his skills directly safeguarded lives. These accomplishments are more than statistics. They represent lives protected, crimes prevented, and a community made safer because of his service. As Zero retires, he will remain with Sergeant G. and his family, where he will enjoy the comfortable life he has earned after years of hard work and sacrifice. On behalf of the Monroe Police Department, the City of Monroe, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to K-9 Zero for his outstanding service and to Sergeant G. for his dedication and commitment as his handler. Please join me in recognizing K-9 Zero for his distinguished career and in wishing him a long, healthy, and happy retirement.
Well, everybody, if you want to get in, the dog is the show, but.
He smells something.
I think you say that again, David?
He smells gator.
Okay. Kind of likes South Florida Bulls. I get it. Congratulations, John. I think I have two people signed up for public comment. Kent? You're in charge of turning around the podium first.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, John, well, I'm in deep trouble. In the behalf of us as the Cowboy Ministry here in Walton County and City of Monroe, I am gonna do something that I thought we would never do in our lives. If I can, could I have the mayor step down here to the podium?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. We have two and a half more minutes.
Well, this is, I won't give us the line, wish you could know what you would get. I won't miss it.
On behalf of the Cowboys for Christ, to present you with a great appreciation of your work.
It says right here for your.
For your servant-hearted leadership and unwavering support of the City of Monroe. May the Lord continue to bless you as you lead our community and shine his light in all that you do.
It's given by the Cowboys for Christ, Reverend Camp Brad, Reverend Linda Dillard, this year of 2025. Hang on. I think.
Sorry, at least you got a picture. Thank you. That's so nice. I appreciate the surprise. I'm gonna put this in my office, so when you come visit, it'll be on the wall. Okay, moving on. Thank you again, Kent. I really certainly appreciate that. Moving to items of business, the City Administrator Report, Logan Probst.
I'll just be real quick here, because we got a lot of business ahead of us. I think we got the latest target date of October 31st for the opening of the long-awaited truck bypass. We'll see if that holds. We hope it does. But that came from a meeting last week with a few GDOT folks. That was the original target date, anyway, of project completion, so hopefully they're getting the traffic light finalized over there at Unisia Drive, and then the other half of that roundabout down on 11 South finished up. So hopefully that will be operational in short order. Along with that, I think I've briefed you on SR 11 US 78 about signalizing that intersection up here at the bridge. We have submitted the permit to GDOT. They sent it back to our engineers for a few comments. Those have been resubmitted. So hopefully I'll have a timeline to build, and once they can give us the official green light on that permit. So we're going as fast as we can on it. It's just simply a GDOT issue at this point. On the budget, we have started the budget with Ms. Thompson. She may report a little bit on that. But we've pretty much given the instructions that we want 2026 to kind of be a maintenance year. We're finishing a lot of our CapEx projects, huge slew of projects over the last few years. We're trying to wind down the majority of them in 2025, so that we can get to a more of a maintenance posture in 2026. So that should see, you know, hopefully some reduction in those CapEx expenditures. I think Mr. Bailey's gonna touch on our TAP streetscape here in a minute. And lastly, I just, I wanted to note, you know, economic cycles have been up and down, and we get a lot of bad news nationally, right, on inflation that we all feel. And, you know, the economic cycle is kind of strange sometimes, but man, we are getting just covered up with economic development interest here at Piedmont Industrial Park, and also, of course, down there at the Southern End of Walton County. Some of these are so large that we're all looking for ways to collaborate among city and counties. And some of them are just very local, but the interest has not waned at all. So that's still exciting times here in Monroe. That's the balance of my report right now.
Perfect. Are there any questions for Logan? Thank you, Mr. Probst. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, and I'm gonna cover mine, central services, and elements of street, too, so it'll knock out three in one.
Okay, thank you.
We had our annual CIP meeting with GMC, our consultants, and the Department of Transportation this afternoon for about three and a half hours to discuss everything that we've got coming at the airport in the next five to 10 years. The next two years is gonna be, as we've stated, obstruction removal. Mr. Crowe has done an excellent job of having about 90% of our obstructions that are on property removed. So we're getting there, and we're very early in the stages of anything that's off property, but we have everything worked out through state and federal grant funding, so it should only cost us about 5% of a total $580,000 project estimated over the next year or so. As a reminder, September 20th, we will have, I think, our 12th or 13th rendition of our ESP Big Jump Fall Fest at the airport, so be sure and attend that. We usually have 2,000 to 3,000 people that show up, and then you can jump out of a plane, if you would like to, and donate money to the organization. Kind of jumping ahead to parks, you'll have a resolution before you tonight on the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program Grant that we're applying for again this year. And then Logan had mentioned TAP grant. I fired out an email this morning. We met with the construction company, our engineers, GDOT, this past week. We're planning on starting construction, which I assume will be just mobilization on September 22nd. So that'll be your Lumpkin Street, your North Lumpkin, your East Highland, and North Broad Street from Highland to Marable, and that project is slated for 540 days. So, I mean, we're looking at the better part of a year and a half to two years on construction of that. It'll be for streetscapes, lighting, pedestrian crossings, additional sidewalks on Lumpkin Highland area. It will essentially match what we've done on South Broad, North Broad, and then West Spring. So that'll be an in-depth project that we will all be involved in. On the street side of things, our LRA and LMIG projects and grants are underway. Breed Love Drive, not 100% sure if they finish striping today. I know they started this morning, so that street will be completely done. Next Monday, we will see the milling of Davis Street start, where we replace sidewalks the length of Tahara Street, I believe. And then following that, they will jump over to Sorrel Street and start milling. And then we will jump to East Marable, and we will mill from Broad Street to the bridge, at which point paving will follow each street after it's milled, and we will get through that hopefully in the next three to four weeks. So we'll have some nice newly paved streets. I think it's a little over eight lane miles that we're doing this year for a total of $520,000 in grant funds. Lot of downtown items. First Friday concert, the last of the season, was this past Friday night, and we had almost 4,000 people in attendance. They were there for almost three and a half hours was the average stay. So good attendance. Our farmer's market, our fall season opened back up this past Saturday. That'll go through November 22nd. Fall Fest will be October 11th, which will take place before we have our next council meeting, the way dates fall. Farm to Table, tickets are on sale, October 26th. That'll be at the Town Green. We have 200 tickets available. I think we've sold just over 100 so far, and it's only been open for about a week. Christmas Parade this year, the applications opened yesterday for participants. We will be accepting 75 participants, at which point we'll probably get 100-plus, and then we'll go through and vet as best we can. Dino Day is this coming Saturday. Yes, we will have dinosaurs in downtown Monroe. And then I wanted to let you guys know that the GDA Conference, or Georgia Downtown Association Conference, was this past week. And while Monroe's Downtown did not win Downtown of the Year, we were in the five finalists throughout the state. So still a bit of an award and a bit of recognition just to be listed with the group of cities in the entire state that were recognized. And I will be glad to take any questions if you have.
You know, I think that's pretty impressive. We won it just a few years ago. For them to even allow us to be back in the running so quickly is pretty impressive. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, Chris. I'm moving to department reports. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to touch over what's in your code report for you this evening. Planning Commission activity and Historic Preservation Commission activity. We'd have items for those, both those commissions this past month. They're both pretty steady. The code department permits, they're up substantially this month. They were up by 19 permits. That's reflective of some of the new subdivisions that have been recently platted. A lot of the ongoing products in the city are just pretty steady right now, and I've got some new preliminary plats and final plats submitted into the building that you'll be seeing here soon, at least the final plats and the pre-apps that I had here recently. They just kind of sloughed off for the past month. Part of that's because we had some staff out of the office and things like that. Other than that, I didn't have any specific details to cover. Other than that, that's all that I had, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions for Brad? Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Ms. Thompson, Finance?
Thank you, Mayor. You have a for you, the finance report as of July. So highlights I'll point out as of that report. In the general fund, local option sales tax collections are tracking slightly below budget, just about $20,000 off where we should be for this time of year. Overall, general fund expenses are exceeding projections by about $113,000 overall. In the utility fund, year-to-date, revenues are exceeding budget, while expenses are trending below budget. In the solid waste fund, as of July, revenues and expenses are both trending about $400,000 below budget. As Mr. Pope's pointed out, we're currently working on the 26 capital and operating budget with projections with department directors. As a part of the planning and review process, we'll have a budget meeting scheduled over the next couple of months, and we will be reaching out to council to go over that, probably late October or early November. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Thank you, Beth. Chief Dykes?
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you in your packet the incident data from July. Couple of things I'd like to hit as highlights. July was actually down, which I will take a down month, especially in the heat of summer, anytime. We had 196 calls for response, and that was down about 20 from our previous four-year average of 215. However, as of August 1st of this year, we were within four calls, we were four calls higher than we were at August 1st of last year. So we're trending to stay on track, to exceed 2,500 incident responses for this current year. Few of the highlights there, you'll see in your packet, that we received aid four times last, in July, three for fires and one for a pretty significant auto extrication. And we gave aid to the county six times, so that continues to be a very good working relationship that's very well balanced. Lot of training going on right now. July, we had the state come in and teach an acting officer in charge class with, and we sponsored that with Walton and had folks from multiple departments. Next week, we're doing an Instructor One class, and then next month, we'll be doing Apparatus Operator Pumper. All of those are 40-plus hour classes that a lot of our folks are really excited about taking, and it's a good opportunity that we are able to do those here. And as many of you know, there was a loud boom Saturday night. I heard from a lot of folks in town, but there was no explosion in Monroe, so that's the main thing, no damage and no people injured. My phone literally blew up about five minutes after my windows and roof shook at home. But other than that, we're just maintaining, staying on track, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Chief Dykes? Thank you, Andrew. Major McClung, police?
I'll be, I'm speaking tonight for the chief. This is his 25th wedding anniversary, so that's why he's not here this evening.
Excuses, excuses.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep it brief, though. I'm gonna go over our July activity, the year-to-date versus last year. Calls for service, we've had about 2,294 calls for service this year. That's down 308 for the year. Our area checks, we've had 9,483. That's patrolling your neighborhoods, making sure everything's good. We're down on that, though, about 2,771. Training hours are up significantly, though. We're at 971 training hours of our officers this year as compared to last year at this time. That's increased by 434. Our Part A crimes, which would be your more serious crimes, your murders, your robberies, your kidnappings, those are equal to last year at 74 this time. And our Part B crimes, which are your DUIs, your more minor crimes, those would be, we're up 10 on those. So we're at 33 on the year right now. Our arrest rate for adults right now, we're down from last year at 37. That's down 12. And our juvenile arrests are up by two with four so far this year. Anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Major. Are there any questions? Thank you. Solid waste. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have, I just wanted to report on mattress collection for the month of June. We picked up 178 curbside. We were able to recoup 86. We were able to recoup eighty-six percent of them. We build out a hundred and forty-six, so that's a pretty good gap. So that means we've kind of reduced in the amount of random matches that's been dumped on us all over the city. But that's pretty much all I have. Other than, Tony's report for the transfer station, we still trending right at about thirty-three percent since the increases over the last three years, so pretty much steady. But that, that's, the rates kind of drive those prices.
Thank you, thank you, Danny. Are there any questions, Mr. Smith? Any none? Chris, did you have anything to add to streets?
No.
Okay. Okay. Telecom, Logan?
I'm gonna take Mr. McGuire's report. He's at Fiber Network Alliance Conference right now. Just to kind of piggyback on what I was saying earlier about us winding down a lot of the projects, on the bond project, twenty-twenty bond project, we are kind of finishing up the West Walton area that we, it's outside the city, but we serve a lot of those areas for fiber. We're also wrapping up the East Marable Street area this week. We should have most of that done. So that leaves kind of the, just a few small areas in South Broad and a couple of other areas just outside the city that we currently serve to be fully converted over to fiber. So right now, that means that we have less than a thousand customers on the old cable coax plant, which is great, so we can start the decommissioning process of it. What that means is that saves us a little bit of money, a lot of maintenance costs on this old coax plant, so that's a good thing. We are also still running new fiber services to some new subdivisions. We have about five out of seven that have come in recently in some form of installation, so that's great for the business. And then we're also working on the major redundancy project we mentioned a few months ago. You know, we had that one strange outage that was just completely out of our hands, and so it hit at the wrong time. We were already working on this project, but what that means is if we have a major hit somewhere way outside our network, we have full redundancy other ways out so that nobody in Monroe loses any service. So it's a fairly expensive project, but we're gonna get that wrapped up by the end of the year, hopefully.
Thank you, Logan. Any questions, Mr. Probst? Mr. Middlebrooks?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been waiting six years to say this, actually three. The two thousand twenty-two CDBG is officially wrapped up.
Yay!
Finally. Because we liked the punishment so much, we put in for another one, and we was awarded the twenty-twenty-five CDBG of one million dollars two weeks ago, I think it was. This will replace sewer and storm improvements along West Marable and Nile Street. So got that one coming up. As far as the water projects go, the sixteen-inch, everything's paved along Marable and Union, finished laying, finishing up laying on the Cherry Hill side of the project, then we'll start the chlorination process and get that ready to go for the new tank. The raw water line is completed, is being tested this week. We expected the raw water, I'm sorry, the raw water's finished. We were expecting the finished water to be ready this week, and we ran into some issues down at the creek with some rock, so that's gonna be a little bit longer, but expecting all, all three water projects to be wrapped up in October, so it's coming to an end. That's all I got.
Perfect. Any questions for Rodney? Thank you, Mr. Middlebrooks. Is there any old business that I'm missing? That'll work. Moving to new business. Have a public hearing for conditional use, number three nine zero four, eleven oh eight East Church Street for self-service laundromat. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is for eleven oh eight East Church Street, and this is currently inside a small-scale shopping center at that location. There you go. So you can see there, this is the existing plat of that property there on East Church Streets next to an existing gas station. The property is currently zoned B1, and in B1, self-service laundromats are, in fact, a conditional use. And you can see, this is an existing shopping center here. There's a photograph there. The sign on top of the space that they wish to do this, you can see it says Coin Laundry, but they are not currently operating there now, and they haven't been for some time. And in your ordinance, when they're not operating for more than six months, they're holding a license for that period of time, they have to come back before you to renew their conditional use, and that's the request before you this evening. It's very straightforward. They're proposing a floor plan, basically it's your traditional self-service laundromat layout, you know, dryers, washers, restrooms, facilities, seats, and things of that nature, and folding tables. So the planning commission has taken a look at this, along with staff, and has made a recommendation for approval without conditions.
Thank you. Any questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this conditional use? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this conditional use? I think this is gonna be a slam dunk. Would you like to say something? Is, yes, sir. You had that, that look, look, you're ready, come on.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Jonathan Freeland. This is my wife, Christina. We're, you know, business and looking to reopen this laundry. Couple of things to point out, it really is trying to improve service to the community. The current providers don't provide AC, the units are smaller, et cetera, so we're looking to upgrade the equipment, modernize the space, add AC to the space, and really provide a better value to the community. At the same time, we've done market analysis to show that reopening this laundromat still allows for plenty of market potential, so we don't anticipate having a negative or adverse impact to the two local providers, Spring Street Laundry and Sunshine Laundry, who have been operating in this market for some time. So that's something that we were at least conscious of to make sure that, you know, reopening doesn't negatively impact them or cause them to, you know, not be able to be viable. Other than that, I'll just answer any questions anybody may have.
Does anyone have any questions? They were pretty good. Thank you so much for coming in. We'll revisit this in just a couple of minutes, okay? Thank you. I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed. We're moving to the adoption of the Development Impact Fee ordinance. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. This is your second reading and adoption this evening. I don't have much to cover, other than I'm here to answer any questions that you have. This is the presentation of your second reading, but basically, we covered all the details of this last month. I don't have anything to offer this evening to the council. If they have any questions, I'm here to answer them now, and I'm sure Paul also is here. If we can answer any questions for the council.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Any questions for Brad?
Just implementation dates, when, when will we, once we pass?
It's effective to, effective moment it's adopted.
Okay.
Effective tonight. So adoption of the Development Impact Fee ordinance, this is a public hearing. I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for the purpose of public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the impact fees? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the impact fees? Hearing none, I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we will revisit that in just a moment. And now, we are, new business, the conditional use, number three nine zero four, eleven oh eight East Church Street, self-service laundromat. Normally it says refer to Brad. He's just told us about this. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Dickinson, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Brown. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to ordinance to add chapter fifty-six, impact fees, also that we just discussed. Are there any questions for Brad? This will go into effect tonight. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to Oak Grove Landfill Disposal Agreement Approval. Danny or Chris?
I'm, I'm gonna take that one, and then I'll holler at Danny if I need any extra. This is something that we have not had in a while. We had a ten-year agreement with Oak Grove, I believe, for, we've had agreements with them, and we had a ten-year agreement where they guaranteed, like, the rate increase that went up, and that expired, and they went up on us the one year, I believe it was fifty-eight percent on our landfill costs, which is what has put us in a situation of having to really study rates and trying to catch up along the way. And then after about three, four years, finally kind of talking with them, they've settled and are gonna give us a, offering us a three-year agreement, a four percent increase each year. So that helps us kind of stabilize and be able to watch kind of how our expenses are gonna go up, because the landfill cost represents about forty percent of the entire solid waste expense budget. So asking for approval of the agreement to enter in with Oak Grove, three years for four percent increase each year.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Are there any questions? Danny, did he miss anything?
The only thing on there, that's special instructions about the mattress pickup. I just want to clarify, that's for the haulers and not, not for curbside pickup. The rate went up, it's gonna go at fifty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. So anything going into our transfer station, that's what that charge is, and at this point, we are turn, we're, that cost is passed on to the, to the hauler, whoever brings it up there, so we're, we're good. It's not the curbside fee.
Got it. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Moved.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second? Second by Ms. Sam, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to appointment of the planning commission, Mr. Calendar?
Sorry, thank you. I'm sorry, we were covering something about those impact fees. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
Right, all right.
So I'm pleased to present the, after interviewing some of the candidates we had for planning commission, the, we are pleased to recommend Bonnie Rosser to our planning commission. I believe Bonnie's here this evening, if y'all don't know Bonnie, but, um...
Hey, Bonnie, thank you for being here.
That's our recommendation for our appointment to planning commission, and that would satisfy all of our commission appointments, Mr. Mayor.
That sounds perfect. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, Ms. Rosser, in addition to the planning commission, for a five-year term, correct? And I need a second, please.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Malcolm, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, Ms. Rosser, I appreciate it. Moving to alcohol, excuse me, alcohol application, beer and wine, distilled spirits, and Sunday sales, consumption on-premise license at Applebee's. Mr. Rosenthal?
That application is in order, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Paul? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crawford, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the ordinance for moratorium extension. Logan, you want this one?
Sure. You know, we have to renew this every six months per the current state law. So we are extending, basically verbatim, our previous moratorium on accepting of preliminary plats in general for units of nine or more outside of the city core. So that will remain in effect as we finish out our engineering and eventual construction on our expanded wastewater treatment plant. And again, that's going from three point six million gallons a day to six point eight. So again, this mainly impacts our residential development, larger residential developments, but we have to maintain the existing capacity for what we have coming online right now.
Thank you, Logan. Any questions, Mr. Probst?
Just to clarify, this is an identical ordinance with just an extension of what we had before, but it's not only preliminary plat approval for outside the city core, it's also for any multifamily or townhome projects greater than nine anywhere in the city as well.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'm open, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. I'm gonna give the second to Tyler. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the resolution for the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship, Stewardship Program Grant. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. This is a required resolution by the City of Monroe that gives us support and, I guess, the approval to apply for the grant with the DNR and the Georgia Outdoor, Outdoor Stewardship Program for a twenty-six point eight percent match to that project that we are applying for, which we are applying for a three million dollar grant, and then it's a one point one million dollar local match. And this goes towards the application, which is a points-based system, and we are giving it another go this year. I think we should be in far better standing with letters of support. We also have outside funding partnership that has kind of jumped in, hopefully, and will join us, and then if we approve this, we will make the application by October seventeenth and here sometime in early spring of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Are there any questions for Chris? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to Jack's Creek Wastewater Reimbursement Resolution. Mr. Middlebrooks?
I'll be happy to take that one, Mayor. So what we have before you is a resolution that we need to get in place long before we issue any further bonds for the expanded wastewater treatment plant. What this does is allow us to recoup any money spent now from the bond proceeds that we might get in the next year, but once we activate this resolution, we can go ahead and start counting the dollars spent as of tonight, tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you, Logan. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm open, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Major McClellan, we're coming back to you for the ordinance to release K nine zero. Did you have the ordinance you wanted to read?
I don't have the ordinance. I'll take care of that.
Okay.
So K nine zero is technically city property, so we have to do an abandonment of K nine zero as surplus property. That certainly doesn't belittle his value in any way, shape, or form, but you got two documents that y'all need to pass. One is an ordinance to surplus the dog, and the second is in conjunction with, and that is a release agreement with Sergeant D., who is going to take ownership of the dog and indemnify the city for any future ownership of the dog moving forward so that he can live out his days in good comfort. So we need a motion to adopt the ordinance to surplus and then a motion to adopt the release agreement. These are the formalities of which I've already done.
Okay, so we need...
Together, or...
That's fine.
I'll make the motion, too.
Adopt both the ordinance and the release agreement.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Sam's. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. That is a beautiful dog. I'm glad Ryan's gonna get to keep him. Moving to district items, Ms. Malcolm.
Just thank you to the Rhodes Crew for a seamless repaving of Breed Love. It looks great, and I know it was inconvenient for a few days during the last couple of weeks, but it's certainly well worth it.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Ms. Crawford?
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
District three is good, per usual, but I did have a couple of business owners off of North Hammond reach out, and they expressed their displeasure of how long the roadwork is taking on Marable, and they, they showed up tonight, Miss Christie Crawford, Laquisha Burton, Dan Cooper. And Rodney, I know you touched on it a little bit, but if you can, just give them a little bit more clarification about what's going on and a timeline, if possible.
So all, all the paving was finished up this week. The only thing left to do on Union would be the striping. So Union would be completely finished up. Marable, they'll be paving, city will be paving, what, a few weeks, I guess, but...
Yeah, we'll come back in after, I think y'all have gotten everything situated with the cap.
Yeah, everything's done.
To put on the waterline. So we'll come back in, and as you mill and pave streets, we'll pa, we'll mill it and then repave everything, re-stripe it, so it'll be a brand-new street.
Yes, ma'am, please. And we thank you for your patience. And, and I know, and I know it hasn't been fun.
How y'all doing?
And, and before, before I ask you to introduce yourselves, please, um, I wanna do what you know. I don't know if you've seen Breedlove Drive that took, you know, we, we did the deep patching, and then we went in and paved and then striped, and it seemed like it's, gosh, that one's easy, and this one, this one's not the same. This is water lines, gas lines, so, so that's why it's a whole bit more different. But anyway, if you would please go and introduce yourselves.
That's why we had issues and concerns about it. This is, um, Laquisha Burton. She owns seven-seven, um, Old Smoke. I own Jerje Beauty, and then you have, um, Cooper. Um, he actually owns Cuts Amazing. And us as revenue businesses, we lost a lot of money in regards to the street being built and everything like that. No one, I don't remember even, anyone even telling us that these things was being taking place. This is our livelihood. This is what we use to pay our bills. And yesterday, for a prime example, we couldn't even open, because they were paving the street, people ride by. And yeah, I'm getting teary-eyed, because we gotta live too.
Right.
We're entrepreneurs. We've been working hard to stay a entrepreneur, but when things like this is taking place, what are we supposed to do? Especially when you don't get no notice, um, none of that type of stuff, and we pissed off, I'm being honest. So this is why we're here today, to see if the city can help us, um, compensate us. I don't know if, if that can be done, but we're asking, because it took money out of our pockets, our kids' pockets, our house, things of that nature. So that's why we're here. We can, if you need paperwork, we can show you the pay cuts that we took, all of that type of stuff. So we're just asking, could, can we get help?
That's gonna be something that we have to look into. We've never done something, uh, directly before. Um, I will say this, uh, and, and I, and I hope you'll agree that once we're done, uh, we, we're done with, with Union, but when the entire Hammond and Marable project is complete, uh, which I see being done, you know, by the first week in October, with the milling and the repaving of everything, um, you are going to be decades away from having any, any more disruption. Um, I know that doesn't mean that the last couple of months make that any easier. That's just, uh, a, a promise to you for the future. Um, and, and, and we will also be better about notification. Um, so if you would stay in touch with Chaz and me, and we'll talk with Logan.
And Adrian is also, she's been helping us tremendously as well. Chaz, and he's been helping us out tremendously. And I also wanted to speak for the owner too. I'm here for the owner, um, which is Peter, and also Phelps. I told Jason that I was gonna come and speak. I'm not sure of any, I don't know if the, the non-revenue loss business, per se, but the damage of maybe their trucks and stuff like that, and then the owner of that whole strip mall, he lost three people behind that, because they couldn't pay their bills. Because of the paid, people going elsewhere, other than continuing on being our customers because of the street.
Right.
And the roads were completely closed on both sides, so sometimes even though it was closed to the police, like you had to go all the way around.
Right.
We're driving in the grass and just to be able to park in front of the plaza, and I know me, the type of person that I am, if something is going on, construction is going on like that, I'll just go the other way. Or I'll just go to a different store until they can fix that one. Which means that the customers that we do have coming to the business are now going elsewhere, and who's to say that we're gonna be able to get them back?
That's it.
Right. I, I, I understand and sympathize. This is gonna be something that we have to talk about.
Okay, thank you. We just wanted to bring it to, to the, uh, forefront, just to let the city know what we're going through.
Uh, I, I, I definitely appreciate it, and, and, uh, and it has been painful for all of us. It seems a little more painful for you, though. But thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, you too. Ms. Sams? Ms. Brown? Mr. Gregory?
Um, while we're talking about tap grants and those kind of things, um, I know we're excited about hopefully something happening with eleven. Um, a lot of folks in District Six want the sidewalks sorted out through there, and I know that we've all talked about it before, but just as a, as a reminder, hopefully one of these days when that becomes ours, we can, we can do that, or if a tap grant. If that doesn't happen, then maybe a tap grant, just putting it back, putting a pin in it. And, uh, also, you know, the possibility of it on Walker Drive, you know. Those were two requests that I was asked to make. Here I am making them, so.
What was that on Walker Drive again?
Yeah, on Walker, just sidewalks. Yeah, sidewalks. You know, everybody loves walking. Everybody loves the walkability.
Yeah, and, uh, I recently had the conversations with GDOT about taking ownership, local ownership of State Route Eleven and eventually part of Spring Street. And, uh, it'll be much easier and much cheaper to put sidewalks in once we have that ownership.
And that's what I've been, that's what I've been expressing and just not making any promises it'll happen to this old GDOT, but, yeah. So we're, we're all excited about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Thompson, are you there?
I just wanna echo what Ms. Malcolm said about, uh, McDaniel Street. It really drives good now. Uh, I don't have any requests from, from my district.
All right. Thank, thank you, Greg. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Dickinson?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a request, sort of following up on what these folks were saying about their businesses being disrupted. Um, my neighbors on Davis Street need to get notice, like, quickly that that milling operation is gonna take place, because people are not gonna be able to get in and out over there. So I just wanna make sure that somebody goes through there, lets every residence know what's about to happen, and it'll be great once it's done, but it's gonna be disruptive until it is. And we got notification about sidewalks. That, I think, went very well. I just wanna make sure, because the milling's gonna be disruptive to both sides. And, you know, the sidewalk wasn't. It was only on one side. So just make sure everybody gets notice about it.
I'll do it. Thank you.
Can I have one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we get an update on the traffic study on Alcoa yet? I know that they pulled up, but they put some more down.
I've got it in my inbox.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, my update, um, Julie Sams and Adrian Brown will be receiving certificates of recognition, recognition from GMA for, uh, that first level goal of training hours, and I appreciate you're both putting the nose to the grindstone. Uh, Mr. Dickinson has had a little bit, while, a little while longer to get to the certificate of achievement.
Yeah, you told me about twenty-five years.
And I think, uh, Mr. Thompson is gunning for the four-hundred club, which is the, uh, Wayne Adcock of awards. So, um, that's pretty impressive. Um, wanted to keep you in the loop, uh, on the, the meeting that we had with, uh, the county, uh, tax assessor. Um, there were representatives from, uh, Loganville, Social Circle, um, Walnut Grove, mayor was in attendance, and, and then, uh, Logan and I were there with, with the city side, and then, uh, John Ward and, uh, the team, and the team from the county, uh, with, um, with the tax assessor and, and the county attorney. Um, I thought the meeting was fruitful. Um, we have agreed that we need to dig a little bit further into some particular properties in advance, uh, see what kind of discrepancies, uh, we really, really have, and then, um, we'll find a way to move forward. But this can be something that, that I think benefits Walton County, uh, as a whole, and in the city of Monroe specifically. Uh, and it should really benefit us for a long time. So anyway, the meeting went well, and I appreciate Tommy's, uh, cooperation. Um, and the last thing that I thought was today, but apparently it was last week, uh, and I'm not gonna start any singing, but happy birthday, Russell Preston. He's put up with us a long time. Do you wanna make a speech? Okay, um, and I did have one more thing. Uh, Les Russell was just, uh, appointed to the Georgia Municipal Association's Municipal Workforce Advisory Council, uh, for this year by, uh, Regina McDuffie and Pete Porzinski with GMA and the City of Brunswick. So way to go, Les. Congratulate him when you see him. That being said, I need a motion to adjourn, please. We give that one to Ms. Boyce. I'm gonna give the second to Ms. Brown. Y'all aren't talking a lot tonight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, meeting adjourned.